Seven o'clock, call to order. Welcome.
First or business today.
What you is.
Oh.
Chairman for the evening.
Chairman for the evening, Ross is out today. I am John Smith, I'm the co-chair. So.
I'll make a motion that John Smith take over duties as chairman for the evening.
Second that.
All day.
Don Clay, I.
Bill Fontaine, I.
Wonder if I say. John Smith, I. Motion passes. Alright, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on the docket is the notice of a public hearing. In accordance with sections two hundred dash five dash six F and two hundred dash five dot six J four of the Charlton zoning by law. The Charlton planning board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, January third, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M via Zoom. Meeting ID number two one one two eight. Three, two, two, five, seven, and in person in the planning board office at the George. Building thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. On the special permit application of Edwards Services LLC, three, 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 ma- East Main Street, Southbridge, Mass. Oh, one, five, five, oh. For an approval of a thirty-six. Square foot illuminated freestanding sign. Or up to a thirty-two foot freestanding sign is permitted. The sign is proposed to be used for a store. Name and gas pricing advertising. The property is located at sixteen Sturbridge Ru- Road, Route twenty, assesses map. Twenty-seven block C parcel seven. And it's one point two two acres. In his own general industrial, industrial general. Copies of the special site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board's office. And the town clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested wishing to be heard should appear at. The time and place designated. And that's from Ross, sorry.
Uh, Chris Chairman, uh, Patsy Riley signed on while, uh, just when you started.
Okay.
So she, um, and she can act the, act as a regular member tonight due to the limited. Amount of people, so.
Awesome. Patsy, are you all set with that? That's your, um, you.
Hi, Patsy.
That being said, we have the representative of Edward Service Station. Can you state your name for all to know?
Good evening, I'm Kalisto Burton. I'm here representing Edward Service Station and. Uh, Eddie Wahib is here with us tonight. Um, we actually have the first two matters on the application. Um, thi- this was the special permit for the sign, and then also the second matter is the site plan application for the. The new service station. Do we just deal with the sign first?
I just. Uh, we go with the sign.
Okay.
That's what the meeting's for.
I was last here in July where we presented the site plan application, and I have the rendering, the same rendering from July. That we, uh, presented, um, with the service station layout. And the front of the station is a freestanding sign. It's set five feet off the, uh, uh, curve off the right away line, and it's twenty-two feet to the top, which is in conformance. Um, the ordinance permits a thirty-four square foot sign, thirty-two square foot signs. Um, and we're asking for a thirty-six square foot sign because the common signs are six by six. So we would have on the top of the sign, and, and I submitted. Separately, a, uh, a site plan. Just showing the sign and the, and the plan that's before you. So it's, it's common to have a six by six price sign, I mean, uh, uh. Identification sign below that, it's a six by six price sign. Um, that requires a variance because we're, that, that, that exceeds the allowable area. We're, we're here for the special permit for the sign. I think the goal station, just a little further, um. East on the other side of the road is a six by six. Uh, price sign and, and ID sign. Uh, the mobile station, well, they got the McDonald's sign too, so. They've got several signs, but anyway, uh, so i- it's a common, common sign. So since it's a special permit, we asked. To be allowed to have the six by six. Thirty-six square foot. Identification.
I don't want to sit here with the. The comment that we. Sign is basically difficult, what is that the other location? With the, I mean, the mobile stations, you need your little McDonald's sign.
Having design. Hundreds, thousands of stations, this is a common time.
Let's see, Kurt's commenting, we had, he was. Did he weigh in on this, Randy? Kurt is all from. The C comments.
I, I have comments for him from several months ago.
Yeah, maybe Collins, back, we're actually back from it, it was actually the. Gas station convenience store, so.
There, there is a mail from August ninth. You handed it to me from August ninth, so I guess I was here in August, I feel like. Um, you handed this to me, and it just says the, um. Regarding the. Oh. Your special permit is under the jurisdiction of the plan.
Oh, there we go. Just kind of put it back in.
Yeah, he was in the game. There's no, no opinion of it, he just said, well, we require a special permit.
Right. Don, thoughts?
Um. I have none, but it's typical of what the other two stations from the other town are, I haven't seen them, right?
Yeah. It was encouraged initially, as if he had a. The, an issue with, and we're talking. You and just bigger. Wasn't it, at one time, wasn't it, uh? A structure or something like that, there were some back and forths about. What are we zone that is a structure?
Oh, the, the actually, yeah, fine, yeah, and but, uh, the sign is actually allowed to be. For his own bylaws, the sign is allowed to be. You know, closer than an actual building or other structures. Because it is.
It's a sign.
It's allowed to be in the front yard.
Right, there, there's a signs, first they.
Right.
It has to be in need, and then they have to be visible. If it's going to be, you don't have a sign, if they're not visible, don't bother having a sign. I mean, that's the manual and uniform traffic control device, so highways are designed.
Bill, you have any comments?
Yeah, through, through the chair, John, just, Mr. Kalisto, this is also in addition to the two signs that are on the property themselves, right? Is it in addition to those?
Well, there'll only be one freestanding sign. Uh, there are no signs on the canopy, and there'll be two signs on the building. One is permitted, it's, it's on a face, uh, the side of the building facing the street. There's another one on the front of the building which faces the canopy. That we have to get a variance for, but, so the only other sign on the property is the, uh, sign on the building. And I can show you.
Got it. And this, and you've, you've gone through our signed bylaws, is, there's no flashing or animation with the sign, uh, that would violate our bylaws?
Correct. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm showing you drawing three point four of the set that shows the sign. It's internally illuminated, no flashing. No moving letters. Um. The price sign, which is not subject to this, will most likely be digital, so they can change the prices. And he shows four prices within the disaster. Um, I'm showing you the building. Um, there is a sign in the front of the building facing the canopy, and there's a sign on the side of the building. Um, which will face the street, so those are the only signs, as I said, mostly. The canopies have signs, but we're putting a, a, uh, well, I'll get back into that, but a, a colonial style canopy. It's in better with the area, no need to have signs. If we, if we, we have a proper freestanding sign out front, we don't need them on the canopy.
Yep, I got it. I, I do see the signs on the building, the building layout is, is fine, it, it looks good, it's a nice building. Thank you for the details, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I can see it varies to have the money. One of those two buildings has to stop.
Right. Patsy, any, hello, welcome.
No, I'm good.
Alright. Any, any public, any comments from the public? Anybody raise their hand out there on Zoom land? Okay, make a motion to be close public here.
All favor.
You can vote on.
Is that a second?
Second, yeah.
All's in favor. Uh, Don Clay, I.
Bill Fontaine, I.
That's even like I.
John Smith, I. Uh, just Patsy, uh, you were off when we were discussing your, uh, participation here, seeing as that we're short. We expect your full participation, if you're able to. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, seeing as it's closed, uh, any further discussion around this matter from the board?
Well, for the discussion, I'll make a motion to approve. The Edward Services LLC special permit for a freestanding sign at sixteen Southford, uh, Sturbridge Road.
Second that.
All in favor? Uh, Don Clay, I.
Bill Fontaine, I.
John Smith, I. Motion moved, passed. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, um. Gas station. Application, the next one. Um, public hearing's already been opened, so.
Well, this is for.
Edwards.
Um, Edward Service LLC.
Yes.
And this would be the, uh, public hearing continued for Edward Service. Uh, Incorporated Site Plan Application at sixteen Sturbridge Road, Route twenty.
Good evening, Kalisto Burton here again, on behalf of Edward Service Inc. Um, it was August since we were here. I, I thought. I should just quickly run through what the application is.
Okay.
It's, anybody forgot, and I don't know if the open it was here, uh, at that time. Um, as you mentioned, that the introduction of the prior application, that it's a one point two two acre site. There's an existing old commercial building, it's been abandoned for a long time. Um, there's other uses going on in the property, the neighbors storing materials there. Um, it was at one time approved for a restaurant, but that did not go through. So here tonight, we're proposing to put a service station, it would be a convenience store with motor fuel sales on the site. Um, we'll have a thirty-three hundred square foot building, the canopy is thirty-two hundred square feet in area. Um, the original plan, we came in with thirteen parking spaces, but it was like the calculation required fourteen. So I'm showing you the rendering from, uh, the August meeting, I have the site plan, but we've added another space, so we have fourteen parking spaces. Um, we also made two electric vehicles charging stations, that's the change from the last meeting. Uh, we still propose three underground storage tanks in the front. Um, on this plan, we did not landscape over the tanks, but now the, the plan is landscaped. Because we, to maintain the twenty-foot landscape buffer in front. Um, the traffic closure in the back. Of the state, and as we mentioned, we have a freestanding sign. We're, we're proposing a, a solid vinyl privacy fence along the, uh, easterly property line. Um, so the plan is, as I mentioned, the canopy, the building, one-way traffic flow through the site. So for west, east, westbound traffic would enter. Uh, make the right into the site, park at the gas pumps and face the building. They can stay at the building, or they, you know, if they want to go into the store while they're fueling, they can go into the store or park. Uh, we have fourteen parking spaces, more than enough for a convenience store of this nature. Uh, we have an application pending for the DOT, uh, they want to, uh, us to get through the planning board before they rule on it. But anticipating that they will not allow left turns out, at least not during rush hour, this time of night, you can make a left turn out, but it will fall for them, so. We're not proposing any left turns out on, on the site. And again, it's one-way traffic flow through, um. Circulation, we can get our garbage truck or delivery trucks to the site. The only tractor trailer that'll come in here will be the, uh, fuel delivery truck. And that's what we call a WB fifty, a wheelbase fifty. Um, if this were, you know, a, a big box store, we'd have to deal with the WB sixty-sevens, the large tractor trailer trucks. Supermarket, we don't have those trucks coming. Uh, our app, our client is here, he runs stations, he can confirm it. Uh, his contractor's here, he can confirm it. I've designed. Thousands of stations, and we don't do WB sixty-sevens. Maybe some of the. We, so we don't, we, we don't accommodate that, right? Um. Since we were here last, we, we, we made a, just, oh, I, I, one more thing I'd like to talk about. Compared to the existing site, we reduced the amount of pavement, we're reducing the size of the building, so we reduced, there's like a forty. Percent reduction in pavement and landscaping. I mean, pavement and building coverage, I think that's a significant, because when, usually when we put a gas station in, we're using. Every square inch of the site, um. There's a wetland behind the site, and there's a wetland across the street from the site. And so what we did is for the wetland behind, and it's right up to the property line, this site is paved up to the property line, we moved. The, uh, edge of the curb twenty-five feet from that buffer. I mean, from the wetland, so we, we, we created a twenty-five foot buffer rather than trying to use it, and, um, across the street. Uh, we've, we've. This current site is paved a- almost up to, uh, Route twenty, and we've got now a twenty-five foot buffer. Uh, so we've increased the buffer for that, so all in all, we've increased about four thousand square feet of buffer area. And that's pretty good, usually, like I said, with gas stations, we're, we're using the whole site, and we need all the setbacks that, that's required for this site. So I just thought it was important to talk about that. Would you like to, or you saw the building, we just showed it. It, it looks a little bit like Cumberland Farms, because our client said, can we look like a little bit like Cumberland Farms, so it does. Um, and as I mentioned, the canopy is not a flat canopy, it's, it's got a gable end, so it's got the same. So, so it's more of. Residential. Type of a canopy rather than a commercial, and we thought it'd fit in well with the building. And there is. Um. Since we're last here, I, I, I mentioned those few changes we made to the, uh, site, we also added a fire hydrant. At the building inspector, the, the building officials requested a fire hydrant now there. Um. Okay, and then there was some back and forth with the, uh, engineer regarding the drainage system. So we made a slight modification for the drainage system, we had it going over land. And collecting, uh, on the east side of the site. Now, we, we put in a couple of inlets. And we treat it with a mechanical treatment system, uh, aqua filter and, and so forth to treat the, uh, stormwater, and I think except for. We, we, the, the, the model number of the unit and our drainage calculations, and, uh, the most recent set. Uh, doesn't match what's on the plan, and of course we match it because we, we modified it in the last submission, so the last submission we made was just the drainage calculations. Not the plan changes. Uh, the plans that are here are, uh. August eighth. Uh, August twenty eighth is for the plans that were submitted.
And December thirteenth is the latest greatest review, is that correct?
Yes, the least, uh, reviewed from Graves.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a September review, we made a couple of changes to the drainage system, and then he wrote the, uh, December review.
We eliminated the rain garden and all that, right?
Yeah.
There you go. And there was a concern of our, um, conservation commissioner at the time.
Well, we haven't wanted a conservation commission, they didn't raise it, but.
Okay.
I, I guess because there's a potential for a spill at a, at a gas station, you know, spilling station, so, um, otherwise we like to use these. Other, more natural, um. Water purification systems or water cleaning systems.
And you said your, your diesel pumps are going to be not for large trucks, they're going to dispense slowly?
Yes, yeah, thank you for reminding me, yes, it'll be a low volume diesel dispenser, um, and. A, a, a tractor trailer's not getting in there. I mean, he can, but it's not meant for that.
Okay. So there, is there a couple of open comments from Graves, there's everything?
Yes, e- except for that, well, he had a couple of comments. Um, one is that our original test pits were done, um, on the east side of the property, and since we redesigned the site. Uh, we, we, we're putting the building and we can discharge the canopy, I mean, the, the building roof order right next to it, so we have to do another test pit over there. This is a higher elevation, so I'm not worried about it, so that's a condition of approval. Um, there's a comment about the WB sixty-seven tractor trailer truck.
Yep.
Going through the site. Um, there's the comment about, um. What I said, the, the water quality or the water treatment unit, uh, we've changed it and we have to update that. Um, I think there was a comment about a traffic impact study, uh, whether one is needed, I. There was no ruling by the board, I would say this is a service station, ninety percent of the customers coming from the traveling public. And we're not proposing left turns out, I don't know if we'll have left turns in, it's up to the DOT, I don't see that a traffic.
The DOT make you do a traffic studying for a cut or? I'm not quite sure who, who goes first on that.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, I'm surprised that mass DOTs are requiring you do a traffic study based on the use.
They may, and if we have to, we did, but this, this is an ongoing application, um, we, we had submitted it. When, there was a prior layout for this station, and then we, we, and so, uh, if, if they require it, we'll give it to them.
So what is this traffic impact study?
Oh, well, that was, we, I didn't pick up the data. Oh, oh, I think the comment, I'm sorry, from your engineer, was whether you wanted a higher peer review of that traffic.
Through the chair. John.
Go ahead, Bill.
Just, uh, a couple of comments here, re- remind me again, Mr. Kalisto, that there's no basement, right, this building is just on a slab?
Correct.
Yep. And then, thank you, and then pertaining to the traffic study, I, I agree with, uh, the applicant, I, I don't think a traffic study will be required. Because it is picking up most of the passing by traffic, but the concern would be the left turn in. And he's taken care of, uh, as only the applicant can, the, the left turn out prohibition, so. It would seem like the traffic, uh, the left turn in might be the only really dangerous concern for traffic. But that seems to be in the DOT hands. Uh, maybe a little bit outside of our scope. Th- those are just my initial thoughts on that. Mr. Chair.
So, through the chair, right, um, I think we required a traffic study for the restaurant that was going in there. Um, back in the day, um. I would think that the gas station would have a lot more through traffic than what the restaurant would have. Um, and I'm just wondering if, if maybe. The traffic study is warranted, um, just for that reason, and, and should be peer reviewed, just to, to look at it and, and make sure that there's. There's no issues with the, the two additional warehouses that we have on Route twenty traffic, and potentially. The, the reworking of the road that the DOT plans to do within the next few months. So I know there's a lot of work going on in that area now. Um. And if the traffic study has been done. It would be good to look at it and then compare that to, to what the current situation is.
I understand that, I guess, I, I just make these comments, when we are going to the DOT, it's their road, they're, they're, you know, so it's. You don't have to worry about it, because they're going to worry about it, but also.
Actually, no, because they call it down in Charlotte, they don't call them a D and D.
Oh, okay, no, no, no.
There's problems, they call it down in Charlotte, they call it down in Charlotte.
Yes, that's correct. So, but, but they will be reviewing that, and also, you know, this is a permitted use. Um, we are proposing the turn restrictions, I think that's. The most critical part, because, you know, the right turn in or right turn out, if it were a restaurant, there'd be left turns in and left turns out. And, oh, they could restrict it, but this is all.
I believe they were restricted to the restaurant.
Yeah, so this would be pass by traffic, again, ninety percent of the customers come from. The traffic already on the road, and there are. Two stations, uh, east of here, there's four. West of here on the eastbound side of the road, so it's not like there's a real need to make a left turn in, they're called convenience stores for reason, because they're convenient. Um, so we anticipate that we'll have the westbound traffic. Really coming here, so I, the, the, the DOT will be reviewing it, and, you know, we started this application a while ago. Move the process along.
I'm sure, I'm sure they have plenty of study from what has been creating, our, over a few years there. Well, Patsy, do you have anything?
Yeah, uh.
Nothing for Patsy, go ahead.
Um, the lighting on the canopy. Are the lights approach be flushed through the ceiling or the canopy, or they can be hanging down, which typically, especially with LED lighting. Yeah, um, if it's not. If, if it doesn't, it's not a full cutoff picture, or it's not set up into the canopy, it tends to reduce a very large amount of light, you know? But. When it comes to the gas station or car dealership or places like that, it'd be a point of being annoying to the drivers coming by.
Um, the, the, the canopy lights are instead. Um, remember, this is a gable canopy, so it's sloping, so the canopy lights are actually up. Um. They're above, above the gutter line.
Okay, so you're not gonna, they're not gonna be down below, yes, that's what.
No, they'll, they'll be up, I mean, they're, they're not gonna be, uh. They're not gonna slope with the canopy, they'll be put in so that they shine vertically down, but they will not stretch.
You gotta change, yeah, so you're not looking at the right side.
Yes, yeah, that can be annoying, canopy lights.
Yeah.
Page C three dot four, there's. The locations of those, like, you know, canopy.
Yeah, and two point six is the, uh, lighting.
Yeah, it's all the lights, I'm just trying to, I couldn't determine if they were going to be. You know, below where they were very visible.
No, and, 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 and said. I'm, I'm showing C three point four, and you can see the canopy lights are shown. Resets. In the roof, so they're way above the gutter line.
So anybody from the public have any comments on this? On Zoom land or? Here in the office? When would construction be started on this project, please?
Um, well, probably sometime during the summer, but I'd like to say, I I don't think we have all our approvals and the construction drawings for the building done. You know, by March or April, so it'll be in the summer, we still have the zoning board to go through uh and the conservation.
And the conservation.
Yeah, and they wanted to wrap up here first before going to the conservation commission because, again, it has to do with, if if you were to ask us to move the curb back, well, then our, you know, our. Buffer calculations change, so that's why, if the application is done, it's in, but we haven't filed to. Go with further conservation.
Well, that's ready, anything?
It's a board requesting the traffic study review, like great traffic consultants, or they, they don't have one in house, but they have a truck, they have a consultant.
Well, this this is.
Brought that by you.
I I don't know if this is, this is, there's something through this, this is kind of dated information back, I believe in twenty seventeen, it was this, was this the date of this? Topics later, studying here. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, okay. I mean, see, to me, uh only because we've required it from every other person that does anything on Route twenty. I would like to have Graves just have a run through, and that's just me, to make sure everything. And it might be who of you to have that done for the state and saying that we had it, looked at our 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 study, looked at it and said. You know, we are good to go, that might be one less than not knowing how the state determines that, but.
Yeah, I mean, as we all know, the state just probably just had some significant impact on Route twenty, so. It very. You make sure this property doesn't have any negative impact anymore than everything else might have.
I would hate to say, yeah, you don't need it, and go to the state and say, oh, I do need it, then come back here again to after.
Yeah, I mean, Matt DOT basically said they need it for everything lately, so I don't know. You know, if they might tell him to do it anyway.
Does does this study include, I I haven't read the whole study. Does it include the Amazon facility, does it include the new, the changes to the road? Uh, I will think not, because that's relatively new.
I mean, they they're they're, they are, of course, it hasn't done yet because they haven't got to do it, but they had all that. That lighting changing and the smart lighting installed in all the lights and it was quite extensive on how they were going to manage that traffic flow without. Basically changing the footprint of the road too much.
Right.
And we'll see if it works, but.
You also heard the mass DOT is changing that section between one forty nine and one sixty nine.
Yeah.
So they're reducing uh the west, the eastbound lanes to one lane. And leaving the westbound as two lanes, so that's a little bit of a change. I think the, is that property already where the road narrows?
No. This particular property, yeah. Yeah, what about where they're pushing, is I'm aware of that, we're meeting with Matt DOT. Next, the week after next, to show us what they're actually doing, but they're basically pushing it back to almost Route forty nine. We're gonna have everybody merging into one lane, which is going to have an impact on the service, which may be interesting. Whether services are aware of it, though, but.
I mean, this is westbound lane, so it really shouldn't affect them too much.
Well, the west. The east. Forty nine, and he's gonna have an impact on Route forty nine.
I mean, just, just for this right now, just to make sure. Yeah, we probably should have, no, Graves take a take a peek at that and. You know, give it a blessing before he goes to the state, I would think.
No, can can we condition an approval on that and still vote on on moving forward?
Could do that, that, you know, that be a the who's traffic impact buddy. Right, to receive building permits to build the project.
Get to the moving forward a little bit further. I I know, I know, you're trying to move things along, it's been going on for a while, I get it.
Go to the conservation.
The other alternative, uh um if I may just quickly suggest, what if we allow the applicant, but contingent upon if the DOT comes back? And and they call for a need for a traffic study. Um, then, you know, we can address it at that point, but I think the applicant has shown and, you know, studies have shown that gas stations aren't attracting traffic. They're just pulling existing traffic off. If we do a traffic study, uh I'm very familiar with them with the warehouse projects that we've gone through. There's really not a lot of remediation the town can take even as a result of a traffic study because it's a state road out there. I mean, I would. For an approval and let DOT decide if, uh you know, a further traffic study is is required. The applicant, and we can't really ask him to wait for DOT, this process could be forever with uh DOT changing and proposals on Route twenty. I I would hate to tie up the applicant with with the DOT projects.
Well, the the traffic study is already completed. And and we have a copy of their traffic study that they had done. All I'm saying is is have one of our peer reviews look it over to make sure there's nothing in here that we've misreading it. Um, there are conclusions and recommendations in the back of of the of the of the study and partial of the findings. So I'm suggesting condition building permit on uh a a. A peer review and and addressed.
They they do a peer review and say that the traffic study in their opinion is acceptable. That's. And there was also a condition on that DOT accepting it.
So if we can move on a conditional approval, as long as a peer review has no findings, I like it.
Yep.
Okay, I like it, thank you.
Patsy? All right, I'd like to close the public hearing right now.
So I'll make a, make, is there any, no other comments?
Any comments out there on this?
Big motion to close the public hearing for Edward Services LLC site plan review.
Second.
All in favor?
I can't vote on this, it's only special permits.
Oh, no, you, you, you're sitting as an active member tonight because we don't have a full board.
Special permits for alternates.
Yeah, even though we don't have a full board, you can't sit in as a full member.
No.
Okay.
Okay, um. Done play I.
Bill Fontaine, I.
John Smith, ayes. Look, I look here in post, I'll look here in post, um any other comment on this show? Patsy, Randy?
No, we just have the typical conditions and it, you know, other. Or commissions, agencies, meaning mass DOT, the traffic study will do a peer review, providing there's no findings, then. Also. That will be accepted for building permits and also, of course, the approval from mass DOT before they can have certain building permits issued for the project. You know, this is one thing, with actual building permits to stop the new building, so. And uh they'll probably give you a permit for temporary construction entrance until, you know, some time you're gonna pay and be open and everything, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh the permit for Edward Service Station sixteen Service Road. Uh, condition on approval is a traffic peer review and provided there are no findings to uh conditionally approve this permit with the other. Conditions that you had mentioned, uh, Mr. Benson.
Well, second.
Well, no.
And just one last thing, the condition that uh they address all comments in Graves' review, whether in December.
An updated plan. Yeah, update your plan to the greatest.
Yeah.
Yeah, just. Each other, oh, a couple details, details of uh on your your system, your uh the protections.
Detail, thrust blocks?
Thrust blocks behind for the, is that gonna tie in of the water main coming out? Coming into your project.
Yeah, well, that would normally be a condition, and we need all the standards to go around, so we'll make sure.
You know, before, you may be aware that we have to have a pre-construction meeting with the peer review engineer and your engineers contracted and everything. Before we actually issue building permits to make sure everybody's on the same page. When they have inspection schedule, all one site inspections have to be done, we make that one of the conditions of the.
All right, so, uh, you've got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Done play I.
Bill Fontaine, I.
All right, the uh site plan is approved with conditions as noted for the Edwards Service Station on sixteen St. Andrew. And good luck with your endeavors, and so do you. Left with the other votes.
We got a few to go.
It's a very nice, a nice property, good luck to you guys. Thank you for bringing it to charge.
Mister Edwards, it's gonna be a great building.
Okay, next up. We have a uh seven ten, we're running a little late, a public hearing, uh the uh. Pursuant to MGL chapter forty A, section five, the town planning board will hold a public hearing.
Is somebody raising their hand? Man, you're raising your hand? Monica Stevens, I don't, are you raising your hand? Or is she getting yourself? I don't know if you've done the music, but. Yeah.
Well, again, we will open the uh notice of a public hearing, zoning bylaw amendment. For use table and definition pursuant to the MGL chapters thirty eight, section five, the town planning board will hold a new public. Hearing on Wednesday, January third, two thousand twenty four, at seven ten, in the planning board office. In the George McIntyre Street Building, thirty seven Main Street, Chatham, Mass, via Zoom on a proposal by ESA to amend. The Chatham zoning bylaw for zone districts, section two, dash two hundred dash three point one definitions. Two hundred dash two dash one and section five, special regulations and zoning map amendment. For the creation of a battery energy storage system overlay district within the current zoning bylaw. Request for the zoning bylaw amendment will allow for. This to allow for the creation of a battery storage, of the battery energy storage, D E S S, locked into five megawatts. Within the proposed battery energy storage system overlay district. The complete text and proposal is available at the planning board office and the town quips office for public inspection during regular business hours. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the zoning proposal should appear at the time and place designated. All right, uh, what do you have here for this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? My name is Wes Schaefer. Um, I've also printed the copies you referenced, um, I printed the latest version for your edification. And. So thanks as well, I'll leave copies here. All right, so my name is Wes Schaefer, I'm with ESA, I'm a planner with ESA and I'm joined by my colleagues Nathan Hightower. Who is really sort of a guru on all things battery storage, he's been in the business for fifteen years. And I'm also joined by my esteemed colleague Spencer Dammen. Who is a business developer with our company and is working on two projects here in Charlton. That we will be bringing forth to you in the future, pending this uh petition for a a town by law amendment. So just to give you a quick background, I've been a planner for ten years, I've worked on a number of. Uh, zoning ordinances, including writing an ordinance for a small town in Florida, which I'm happy to say has not imploded since uh adopting my ordinance. Um, I've worked on issues surrounding housing, water, transportation, and now energy. And I think this was a unique challenge for for me as a as a certified planner because I'm representing the developer who. Ultimately seeks to benefit from this petition. Um, in my past life, I've worked as a public servant for the city of Orlando, was a planner for four years. And then later consultant for another four or five years, but always, my client was always, you know, a city or county or municipality. And so in this instance, it was a little bit unique to work on behalf of the developer to build this overlay district. Having said that, I hope that I can demonstrate to you this evening. Um, that we're taking as much precaution as possible to make sure that this overlay district fits the context Charlton specifically. And ultimately serves the citizens of Charlton. So without further ado, these are the four topics I'll be touching on, let me uh close this window. So we'll talk a little bit about how we're defining this overlay, the the criteria we're using to determine the location. Talk a little bit about development standards, safety requirements, and then a revenue share program we're proposing to introduce to the ordinance. And I'm happy to speak on any one of these issues more in depth, oh, I thought I, oh, that's your screen, okay. Um, actually, Randy, do you mind minimizing or moving the uh window a little bit, so it's. A whole group of people, or actually, maybe you need to see people's faces, that's fine. So I'm happy to di- dive deep into any one of these, but I, for this evening, I'll be focused mostly on safety. All right, so why do we need to address battery energy storage systems in Charlton greater than five megawatts? Well, for one, we expect that in response to what we're seeing as um a major shift in demand for electricity. Not only nationwide, but specifically Massachusetts and this region of Massachusetts. a major shift in demand for electricity, not only nationwide, but specifically Massachusetts in this region of Massachusetts. You may have noticed, you mentioned earlier in this meeting that there's been a number of warehouses coming online in this area. And whether it's reshoring of manufacturing or the expansion of data centers or the electrification of our heating in this area, we expect the demand for electricity to essentially skyrocket over the coming years. In fact, Massachusetts will account for more than half of all the load growth in the new England I S O. And so in response to that load growth, we're seeing grid operators advance battery energy storage for a number of reasons, primarily to modernize the grid and accommodate this load growth. But also, you know, make it basically makes smarter and if more efficient use of a lot of the renewable energy that has come to fruition over the last few years. And specifically batteries are sort of the dominant player in this, in this time for storage because of how how low the crop costs are being driven down by other manufacturing processes like batteries for E Vs and so forth. And ultimately Charlton positioned where it's at geographically really is in an advantaged geographic area for introduction of grid scale battery storage. This is the map of Massachusetts. What you see in yellow are extra high voltage transmission lines. What you see in green are high transmission voltage lines and in purple is the is Charlton. And you can see that Charlton's conveniently positioned along what I call this transmission bridge, this really important art artery in the transmission network that serves and connects east and west Massachusetts. And over the last few years, you've seen a lot of renewable energy surface within the, you know, within Rooster County broadly, but even specifically Charlton. And in part, that's a component or determinant of everything from the availability of land to the cost of land. So what you see in blue represents what the census considers urban areas. And you can see that Charlton really is in this very interesting interface between the urban and rural areas. And it's really made, it's such that Charlton is sort of in a, in an advantaged position, geographically speaking, where it sits on this transmission bridge at the edge of the urban boundary. We also noticed in the last, well, particularly in this past year, but even before that, that the state of Massachusetts, specifically the attorney general has under, has really taken a firm stance in support of development of grid scale battery storage. And in a number of instances has released opinions disapproving of local bylaws that restrict battery storage. So I think our challenge, the challenge that I wanted to take on with this is to propose a battery storage that not, that is responsible and conducive to Charlton is responsive to what we'll just, you know, talk more about in terms of safety is responsive to the latest and greatest in safety and is defensible. It's something that we can hold up to the state and say, listen, we've done, we're doing our part and this is a defensible overlay district. Now, that sounds a little bit gloomy, like the state raining down on us, but there are also just direct benefits for Charlton. These battery, great scale battery storage can enhance the local energy resilience and reliability, provide emergency power. And there are environmental benefits to transitioning from some of our legacy power production systems into a more modern grid system that includes batteries. And of course, there's an opportunity to generate revenue for a tax base. So again, these are the four things I'll speak on this evening. Let's talk about where we're proposing this overlay. So we talked, we talked about that transmission corridor coming through Charlton and along that corridor are two substations in Charlton, the Carpenter Hill Substation and the West Charlton. We zoom in a little bit further. The first criteria we used to determine the boundaries of this overlay was just a radius around the substations. So what you see in red is a half mile radius around both the Carpenter Hill and West Charlton substations. And really, even if you were to, let's just say for fun, let's just say there are no rules to land use. This is really the only area you should expect to see battery storage emerge. You wouldn't really see battery storage of this grid scale happen elsewhere unless more substations were built. So really, this is sort of like the extent of the footprint in which battery storage at a grid scale could happen. And that's just based on the feasibility of building battery storage in proximity to substations. But in speaking with the, with a number of folks, mainly Mr. Benson, um, we determined that that radius is still too much for Charlton. It still allows too big of a footprint of where battery storage could occur. So we're applying the second criteria, which we're calling a character base. It looks at those transmission lines that are coming through and it says, okay, those transmission lines already define the character of these areas. They're, they're already imposing sort of this utilitarian infrastructure on the character of this area. And so we don't want to exacerbate that. We want to fit within that. So we've, what you see in yellow is what we're calling the high voltage visual corridor. It's an area that's already defined by energy infrastructure and we want to nestle our battery storage systems within the confines of that area. So the overlay that we're proposing really is what you see in orange. It's six hundred seventy feet, it's within that half mile radius of a substation, but no more than six hundred seventy feet from the high voltage visual corridor. Now, six hundred seventy feet, that works for our projects that we hope to build one day in this area. But if we wanted to think of a more defensible number that is hopefully a little less arbitrary, we may want to extend that to a thousand feet. Now, just in the time that I've been here this evening, Randy handed me a letter from Mr. Meskis, who wrote a comment saying that that he would prefer to see the overlay based on parcel boundaries. And so just real quick, and I have to, I have to take a closer look at this. But if we were to define it based on purely parcel boundaries, you might, it might look a little bit more like this, not, not so clean, but that's okay. I mean, it would, you know, in some areas you'd be exceeding the half mile and some areas you'd be under the six hundred seventy feet. So you can see that if we were to use parcel boundaries, this would more or less be how it looks like what you see in tan. Either way, at, at the end of the day, we want to apply this criteria to say two things. One is it's appropriate to cite battery storage systems of this scale near substations. But it's inappropriate to cite them beyond a certain distance from what is already an area impacted by energy infrastructure, such as the high visual corridor. So just take a, a second look at this. This is sort of what the character exists like today. You can see a substation on the left with these high voltage lines coming through and then on the right, a, a sort of a different vantage point. I do think it's worth mentioning that these, this infrastructure actually fits the the vegetation that surrounds this does a good job in helping to frame and sort of contain the visual impact of this. So with our development standards, we do want to make sure that battery storage does not is essentially not visible and can nestle into this context. It's already sort of balanced between this idea of rural and infrastructure. So it won't belabor the development standards. They're they're fairly basic. It starts with the idea that the battery storage systems must be set back a minimum of a hundred feet. And that, we'll talk more about why that's an important number, in part because that does play a role in ensuring that there's some safety mechanisms included in that. The height of the battery storage systems shall not exceed fifteen feet. The system must be vegetated and buffered. And we've said that that's deemed, you know, that will be determined by the planning board. That's similar to how you treat large scale solar as we, as we say today. And I sat in on a meeting back in May in which that came up where the board actually worked with a neighbor who showed up to the meeting and was able to you know, pass conditions that were conducive to the neighbors. So we, we thought that was actually effective. Important to have the planning board to have that authority to sort of massage what the vegetation requirements are based on the context. Trees must be at least six feet, six to eight feet in height at planting. Any foot security fence, which is, is required by electric code and then minimum standards for the access road and including all other surface and so forth. Now, I don't want to spend too much more time talking to you because I would like to open up for questions, but I do, I do think it's really important that we talk about safety. So this is a slide that no battery storage developer would ever want to put in a presentation because it shows batteries on fire. But as a planner and someone who's trying to craft an overlay district, it was really important to understand why these fires happen and what the best practices are to mitigate the hazard. On the right is Mr. Adam Baraway, who hosts, is part of the Fire Safety Research Institute and hosts an online course that we took to understand how firefighters manage these types of fires. And one of the quotes I took away from, from that presentation, that, that education is, is that, you know, battery storage, they're low risk of hazard, but if there is a problem, it's a high hazard. And as a planner, we're not necessarily planning for the probabilities of hazard. We're planning for the worst case scenario. So what, what do those worst case scenarios look like and how can we accommodate them or how can we mitigate them? Just to run you through the list of things that could happen, thermal runaway, propagation, high DC voltages, high arc flash ratings, explosion, fire, potential stranded energy and re-ignition risk, cooling leakage and abuse during transportation. But just to kind of contextualize the low risk, so that's the high hazard part, to kind of contextualize low risk part. You know, we've been tracking fire incidences over time and projects that are five megawatts or greater, we, we see that there are about eighteen fires since twenty twelve, or in fire incidents, we should say. And you can't see the numbers on this, but basically between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty three, there's a sixfold increase in incidence. And that's, that's, that's a high number, six, there's six times more incidences in twenty twenty three than there were in twenty twenty seven, twenty seventeen. But in that same period of time, there was an eighteen fold increase in battery storage projects. And so statistically, we're actually seeing a lower probability over time of incidence. And just in the time between twenty twenty two, where there were seven incidences and twenty twenty three, where there were six incidences, the amount of storage in America that was installed had doubled. So the fact that it doubled and actually went down over time is a good sign. Moreover, you can't see this, but this, this one on the right basically shows system age and it's one year, two years, three years. We're finding that more than half of the projects built that have incidences have an instance in the first year. But just to say, if you make it through that first year, your your system's probably fine. It's in that first year and a lot of times it's even in the pre-commissioning phase that there is an incident and we're and those instances are often tied to issues related to manufacturing, really. So there's three, three cases that we studied in particular in developing this, this code that I'd like to talk about. The first is in surprise Arizona. So this was a two megawatt project that in twenty nineteen, April twenty nineteen, essentially there was a cell failure caused by a short circuit or which caused a short circuit. And an explosion occurred when the firefighters had thought they had put the fire out. And four hours into the response, they had opened the containers and allowed for what was trapped gas to then reignite and cause an explosion. Now, from this project, this project was built before NFPA eight fifty five was put into place, which is a safety standard that we're applying to this district. But there are a number of issues from manufacturing standpoint, lack of sensors. From a training standpoint, first responders really were in the dark about the system. And a lot of, a lot has been learned since that event about how to implement remote sensing, how to implement ventilation to allow for that gas to dissipate and how to engage firefighters with response training. The next fire I'd like to talk about is the Moss Lane in California where Tesla mega pack, mega pack in September twenty twenty two ignited. Now, this is a very big project. Over a hundred eighty two megawatts of power and seven hundred thirty megawatts of energy. Essentially, a in this case, there was a sprinkler that went off without needing to go off and during the operation and, and short started the, the system and caused a fire. But the way that the product performed with the fire happening was actually kind of a best case scenario in which the fire was contained to one mega pack out of something like two hundred. And so here we learned that the industry, even in the time between the twenty nine, twenty nineteen surprises event and this event, the industry had already evolved to really accommodate this, this idea of containment. And so this fire did not spread beyond this one battery. Most recently, or this past year, there was a fire in Warwick, New York. Palan project, that's eight megawatts in size. And essentially the root cause analysis is still underway. We did interview Palan after this incident because we were in the midst of writing this code. And so we wanted to understand what was going on. They basically said that there was a manufacturing defect that after a very large storm event allow for water to intrude into the container and that that kind of erupted in an issue the next day. But there's been a lot of people, there, there was just actually this past, at the end of last month, a working group found that there was no reported injuries, no harmful levels of toxins detected. And we learned that the setbacks, the hundred foot setbacks are appropriate in allowing for these systems to burn without there being off-site issues, whether that's from toxins or water runoff. So some of the takeaways from these three events and others is that the standards, the industry is really activated and animated to resolve these issues and be proactive. NFPA has new standards that are constantly being updated. We have we have a consultant who's been working with this on us or working with us on this. And he's, he's a participant in these working groups with the NFPA. The manufacturers have been proactive about introducing the latest and greatest technologies. Essentially, nobody benefits from fires, the manufacturer, the, the operator and the town. And so there's a shared interest to avoid these issues from the start. And then we learned that there's actually safety in scale. So larger best product, best projects actually perform better in terms of even the potential for a safety issue because they're able to incorporate the best practices and the best technology to avoid issues. And I think at the end of the day, we, I think we can talk about what the appropriate development standards, what's the buffer, what's the setback? But what must be included in this code is essentially a good process that involves the fire department early. I think they need to be involved in every site plan approval. They need to be involved in preparing an energy or emergency response plan. And then the products and, and products that we do approve need to have the proper technology in place to prevent and contain fires. And then of course, the response and opportunity to learn from that needs to be part of an ever, ever evolving process that this code responds to the best practices as time goes on. So the way the code is written in this current proposal, it takes on this let it burn approach. And that's sort of a cavalier way to talk about something very serious, but it's important to understand that we, the way that this is designed in this proposal, it's designed to adhere to NFPA eight fifty five standards, which says that if it's more than a hundred feet from a combustible or other structure, then it is a remote site. So we would, we would not allow any non-remote sites in Charlton because with the opportunity of, with a remote site So we would, we would not allow any non-remote sites in Charlton because with the opportunity of an, with a remote site. You can allow for uh. A project or a a battery to to burn and opportunity there or the benefit of. Fire burning is that it actually consumes the combustible gases. Uh, and essentially prevents explosion. Um, we, in this code, we are uh. Prioritizing emergency planning, so the operator is required to collaborate, coordinate with town in Charlton, develop. An approved emergency response plan for every project. Annual training will have to ensue, so annual emergency responder and staff training. And then uh post-approval reporting, annual operation and maintenance report to the planning board. Now, for the last part of this presentation, I'll talk about revenue share. And essentially, the idea here is that in addition to property taxes. The town of Charl- Charlton should enjoy additional revenue based on the fact that. Yes, they will benefit from this locally in terms of all the services, the stack services that battery storage provides. But because they're kind of carrying the weight of the benefits for the region, there should be also a revenue share portion. And I was disturbed to hear from Mr. Benson that um. That there may there's talk of, from a state level, that maybe renewable projects will be exempt from property taxes. So this is. This is another layer that says, well, even the regardless of what the state does, there's. An opportunity for Charlton to um generate revenue from these projects. In this proposal, we're saying that a hundred dollars. Uh, the the revenue would be based on a calculus of a hundred dollars per megawatt of power capacity. So for instance, a two hundred megawatt project would generate twenty thousand. Um, dollars per year and that payment rate will increase by ten percent every five years. Um, and at twenty thousand, that's about four to five times more than what the typical property tax revenue is in Charlton. Um, but these funds can be used um to support community infrastructure and services. In particular, emergency services. And with that, I would like to thank you for your time, attention and answer your questions you may have.
So in this booklet, you have the proposed by law.
If if this is.
It's true, yeah, yeah.
It's a lot to throw at you on Wednesday night.
I think from a technical standpoint, because I know how like the Arizona fire, they opened the door and. That was bad.
Right.
Do these have some sort of sensor system on?
Yeah.
They like basically don't open the door until. It's clear for a fire to open the door.
Right, that was one of the main learnings from that was that there needs to be basically gas detection. Sensors, um, first and foremost, to vent the gas so that there is not a buildup, there's a management of heat inside the system. And then secondly, to your point, to communicate to responders. First first responders what the conditions are. But it's also important to note that. Um. That needs to be addressed in the emergency response plan too, not. We can be reliant on the automation because automation is oftentimes better than the human management. But that there still is that human element of annual trainings. And understanding how the system works, any changes or upgrades to the system over time need to be addressed in a revised emergency management plan. Um, or emergency response plan. Um, so. To your, to answer your question directly, yes, that was one of the main things that was learned that we as an industry learned from that uh. Incident.
May I add to that?
Yeah, please just, just to add on NFPA um eight fifty-five, there's additional. Um, NFPA requirements um that are not required for an installation, it's NFPA sixty-nine. NFPA thirteen and in NFPA sixty-eight. And to Wes's point earlier, as you get the more developed systems in place. Um, these systems have more automated exchangement of of the conditions. That are required to be exchanged within the confines of the container if you're installing containers, so.
Oh, yeah, that's in the hope that you want to stay within the. Well, finds of the container shouldn't be a fire or any other type of like a short or whatever. This contained within that container. And that, you know, through proper training and maybe the automated system, they would know. Don't open the door until it's ready kind of thing, so they don't create additional problems.
Right.
So under that, any of those code requirements like sixty-nine is an explosion prevention requirement. Um, thirteen is a, NFPA thirteen is um. Uh, gas indication process that goes within the device. And then um. The de-migration requirements on top of all that, so if you have a battery management system inside the battery. Um, which is required for the cell level um connectivity. And there's a lack of connectivity, battery management system is smart enough to um allow. The operator to know that instantaneously, I say instantaneously, whoever's required for maintaining the system. Knows instantaneously by cellphone and other word processes. And then has a a four-minute window, just the same as a um fire attack that would. To 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 come and to um. To address the security. So, you know, it's a battery. Like a, she's a duracell thinking, right? So it's a cell level. So inside of a a system that's very large, as Wes has shown. Um, any of those cells are capable of having um. Being exposed for short circuit reasons or perhaps water, water gets in, it's short circuit, there's different reasons for. Failures to occur, it's like they would on any, any modern device today. Um, but the kind of the difference here, and I think Wes was uh alluding to. Now, I'd just like to add to that is that. Um, the technology is starting, you know, the technology of how we have early warning systems. Is kind of caught up with the batteries. You know, so that's. Where we are, we get to see that, that's why we saw the gas intrusion um in Arizona. And um. Without gas detection in place, they reopen it up after they thought they had the fire out. Of course, that provided oxygen at preventing caps likely at batteries. And therefore, there was an ignition point that he had oxygen available to do that. If it had the detection system in place for that, we would never open the doors, we'd let it continue to happen.
So in in that case too, they may have. Allowed for the. The fire to consume the gases. One of the issues with Arizona was that they tried to suppress it. And unfortunately, at this stage and technology will change, but suppressing. Trying to suppress fire creates other issues, not only the trapped, the stranded energy issue, which is what he's describing, there's still energy. In the system and oxygen helps reignite it. But also there's water runoff issues with that, you know, dumping those, that load of of water on there um. And then you have a groundwater issue, you have a soil issue. Um, the, the way we're moving as a industry. Is that we are containing the fire in smaller and smaller, smaller spaces. At one point, you could walk in. To a battery storage system, you could, there's a door, you walk in. It's now come down to, well, now there's these containers. Well, now there's cabinets within the containers and oh, now in, in the future, they'll. Ideally, will just be the cell itself. That is able to turn off. If if there's an issue with that one cell, and so we're kind of isolating. As the evolution of the technology, and I think the point we'd like to make is that. We think that at the end of the day, this code needs to be able to respond to those changes, it can't. You know, the, everything's changing so quickly, it can't be outdated the day we. Approve it, needs to be able. To introduce and and plug in the best practices that emerge uh as we continue to develop and learn.
One other thing I would add, Wes, is that, you know, we're taking the broadest aspect. And making it the safest condition. Even though the technology's catching up, so the worst case condition, if the container catches on fire, it's a hundred-foot setback. There's nothing that's going to happen in those conditions, you you talked on the war with New York uh presentation on that. But at the same time, we're taking that and starting to get down to the cellular level, that's the whole point. And the products that are being produced now are meeting those requirements under UL ninety-five forty and ninety-five forty-eight, the testing requirements. So, but to your point. It depends, we all depend on automated alarms and stuff, even on our own house. Well, detector in it, right? It will take off and it alarms us, there's a fire, there's smoke, there's something. It's not any different anywhere else. It's just that in this take, in this particular case, we take the broadest aspect. Let's look at for her.
I have a question if I could just interject here. Um, you guys are talking about fire suppression, I worked for Kira Finwall for nine years. What are you using for an agent? Um, CO2, yeah, I heard water, but.
Yeah, I mean, really, we, we think the best practice is not to use an agent.
No, no dry chemical.
No, unless. The 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 time you would use suppressant is if you, if this battery is in a compliant space where it is. Proximate to structures that could combust, so let's just say, for instance, we put it next to someone's house, well, then. We have to by the NFPA, we have to have a fire suppression system. But we've learned that if we separate the battery, we make sure it's far from anything that could combust any other structures or combustibles. Distance is going to be most of the battle we're trying, like most of the prevention. And then from that, actually allowing for a fire to happen in in mid in. Allowing to the fire to continue, that's actually going to be our best course of action because. Then the, those gases that tend to build up will be consumed by the fire, if that makes sense.
So, so to that point, there are systems that have. In on as a requirement, but just to remember, these types of systems are different than car systems, you saw that before. These are lithium iron phosphate battery types, almost every single standalone energy storage systems. Are made with lithium iron phosphate. Um, uh, other like lithium cadmium magnes, those tend to create their own oxygen environments and. So like in a vehicle, car vehicle, those are designed so that you can put a lot of power into it and take a lot of power out of it instantaneously. Like you had a car. These aren't that way, these are designed to have more steady state uh. Uh, loading and steady state uh discharging, so quite a different type of battery than you'd see in a vehicle. So, um, hopefully that helped answer your question.
I just want to, you mentioned Halon. I believe Halon sales is outlawed, the only people who are using it now is military, typically Navy.
Yeah, there is. Um, they they are using um Halon systems in Europe, but they're coming up with a different gases obvious system. In the US, several different types that they're working on currently, but to Wes's point, the 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 most important thing is to. Um, control the shooter from the hundred-foot boundary away and let the gases burn internally. These batteries are connected, they're basically batteries in a battery pack. And the battery pack is sitting in uh an array of, you know, a stack of batteries with the. With an inverter that operates that. Um, the inverter acts in many ways, kind of like a flashlight switch on and off, but it's actually in a battery, it's converting DC to AC power. It's a large. But each one of those packs are set up that way, so when you talk about getting down to that cellular level, we're not talking like a double A battery. Some cases they're out there. But we're talking lithium ion phosphate battery packs that are a little bit larger. Or well-built than they ever were before because of the new technology that's in place.
Good question.
It is, just one more question that. Yeah, I assume that you're getting the charging of the battery from the substation, the existing substation, which is why you want to be located. Within certain proximity of those substations. Are you using the substation to charge the batteries?
Right, we're using the substation to help us. Dial, I guess, would you say dial up to the the voltage?
Yeah, in in the system, we have, like, if you see a system that's out there even today that's nearby. And you have your battery energy storage system and you'll have a transformer too, right? So you're transforming that power up or you're trans, you're stepping the power up or you're stepping the power down. Depending if you're charging or you're discharging, that makes sense? So. So to answer your question, we use the energy provided by the utility when they tell us to, and usually that's. In the night hours when nobody's using power, you charge the battery, but then during the day. When they need the power, they draw it out during the peak portions of the day between three and eight o'clock, when northern people are. You know, turning everything on in their homes. We were looking at the site around here and just add a little bit to that, you guys have a lot of variable energy resources like. Small solar plants nearby, right? But there's not any energy storage around, it just looks like they're just strictly solar plants from from what I saw, just to quickly.
Some have batteries.
Some have batteries, okay, so once they have batteries or consider maybe. As close to a microgrid as you could possibly have. But the ones that don't are just discharging to the grid uh during the peak of the day. And they, if you don't need the power, it's either going to be. Turned off, not ran, or it's going to be wheeled to some other state. But if you have a battery and if you have a battery energy storage system on your grid. On these particular transmission halls, if you would. Then um you have the ability to provide. You know, I would call black starts. Um, where systems can't provide you energy because they can't transfer through the substation from. High voltage to low voltage, you'll have a battery energy storage system sitting on your substation if there's a power outage on one of your distribution lines. There's the propensity to use that energy storage system and keep, say, a distribution line running. Uh, or a series of them running, where the ones that can't run, the reclosers are open on those, so that no power can go that way, right? So that's kind of your black start idea. There's a lot of other monetary things that we. It's hard to describe without spending more time to do that. It's helpful for having a system in this transmission corridor.
All right, any other questions? Done? I mean, Bill?
Yes, uh, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Schaefer, excellent, excellent work.
Thank you.
Um, how many substations are there in Charlton?
There are two substations within the boundaries of Charlton.
With in addition of uh such a large BSS, does this? Um, cap on, like, is there additional room for other battery storage systems after this system goes in? Or does this like put a cap on it because of the capacity of the substation?
That's a good question. Um, I'll defer to Nathan on that, yeah.
No, there, you have, um, it's kind of interesting how this bridges across uh west or east to west. And in this transmission corridor, uh you have plenty of capacity to add to that and. To the earlier statement that was made, I think by Wes. Um, that you're kind of connecting um east to west through this corridor. Um. It has, it has plenty, I guess to answer your question, there's plenty of capacity of both substations. But to keep the, what what we were thinking with this particular design, we were trying to make sure that we. What Wes did a great job of putting the overlay district in place so that you keep the idea of utility within the right of way of the utility within a thousand or. Seven hundred feet or a thousand feet was the right concept, you know, to have. And yet, yeah, you have room to add more capacity, should should you need to, should the utility want to, should um. The city of Charlton desire to, that's all still possible. Yes, so.
Within the same overlay district.
Well, the reason why Wes picked the overlay district was because it. Matches with the current transmission right of way, so if you put in a battery energy storage system, you kind of want it to fit in. To that corridor, you want it to look similar and. This is not a. This is not a, this is not a solar field. This is, this is something that helps transmissibility, which. In this particular corridor, you're lacking. And you have the perfect conditions or at least utility wise, you have perfect conditions to add. That venue to that, which as they fly and they will power back and forth across that transmission line, you can't see. Cause it's going on day and night. The propensity for a line to fail, tree to come across the distribution line and shut down the transmission system. You have the ability to have something in place to augment that at least a portion. That's one advantage.
Um, just, just a couple other questions. At, at what size do these stations. Uh, become a a utility of of your own, like with with your own. Uh, you know, at what megawatt power or whatever is it considered a utility company?
I mean broadly speaking, one megawatt of power is oftentimes referred to as grid scale. Or utility scale. In this instance, um, we're we're talking about anything over five megawatts. And I think at this stage, uh, we would be looking at a hundred seventy to two hundred megawatts of power. Um, for the projects that were.
At what, at what size does the Massachusetts, do you go in front of the Massachusetts State Utility Siting Board?
Okay, yeah.
Let me, let me answer that um this way because I think it makes more sense, although Wes is right about the one megawatt uh and under this conditions, five megawatts. Open you guys book some restrictions and play for that. The the independent system operator for New England, uh, under uh twenty megawatts considered a distribution type. Affair, although it's still utility and above twenty megawatts is considered and you know that and above uh considered um. Transmission, right? So two different levels of power there to 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 run by. So that's kind of the the split between them. Anything that's done here has to go through uh an interconnection study process. And just for the sake of understanding that, that can be up to three years. So. If we were pragmatic about making a decision over the next, say, three weeks or whatever. It would still be a number of years before anything would be implemented immediately. Uh, now, that being said, we would. Work out all those details directly with you guys, but did that answer your question?
Yeah, I thi- I think so. Yeah, I got you. Be- because we have like obviously a gas utility company uh in in town, you know, sitting right on the Tennessee gas. Pipeline, for example, and they're, I think, I think they're considered a the utility provider, you know. And and I was wondering if you would fall into that class or category at this size.
Anything that is um installed at the utility level would fall into that class. So whether it's distribution or transmission would fall into that. When you're under five megawatts or under one megawatt, it would not.
Got it. Thank, thank you.
So your proposal is for five megawatts or greater, but there's no uh, there's no top limit on that. However, there is a top limit with the, with the uh substation. It can only take so much capacity.
I have a question. The whole reason for me being here tonight is because. For some reason, I saw a correlation between what's proposed here. And Mr. Evan Turner's proposal for eight hundred to. A thousand acre solar array, five O eight centric solar array up in the northwestern part of the town. And I was just thinking that. He said, Mr. Turner, when he was before this board twice, I think all times.
There was a battery component to that.
He said, they're gonna have to build a substation there and battery components. Are you at liberty to say who you're working for? You said.
We were for ESA developer based in Orlando, Florida.
Okay, so this is strictly for those two, the West Charlton and Carpenter Hill. That's what this project is for. What this design, because I can just see this Evan Turner coming in and saying, great, now I've got.
I've I've been a process to get my approval for.
Yeah, right, because I'm sure he was probably saying, geez, if I'm. At least five hundred thousand solar panels up in the northwestern part of the town. I've got to have some sort of a a s- a storage, because that's what he's shooting for.
Well, if I, if I may Nathan, mention that. It was purposeful for us to narrow the scope of this overlay districts. And that was, that was because of what we heard from ultimately the community that, you know, we don't necessarily want to see utility scale batteries. Elsewhere in in Charlton. Now, if you build another substation, you wouldn't necessarily qualify for this um overlay. Unless you were proximate to, unless you were also proximate to. The transmission, the high voltage transmission line. So I'm not sure exactly the location you're discussing, but we would not, this would not enable. Our development entitlements for battery storage outside of this confined area.
Thank you. I just, I just see it, Mr. Turner's proposal. I can, he's probably watching tonight.
And the only, the only other thing I want to mention is going back to. Creating something that's defensible. If you, as the planning board decide that. Um, you do not wish for battery storage outside of this confined area. We want this to be bulletproof to say, we've already, we already have the appropriate code. It's based on technical feasibility and character. And so sorry, you know, XYZ person who's trying to do better storage elsewhere. Unless you decide to change your code beyond this, then um they would not be able to uh, you know, sue or request.
There's gonna be a plus.
I guess they could still.
Gonna share something with that. I think you're, what I think Wes is trying to do is trying to give you guys some real true framework here, right? That you guys can actually. Guys can approve and put in place and and use. And there may be some things that you can still use in a special use permit outside of that, but that would have to be agreed by. The, you know, the planning board and 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 maybe even an amendment to your zoning bylaw. But let me just speak to that thing where you have this gigantic solar field there and want to put a battery. What the. But they're, they're, they're doing something a little bit different from what we're proposing here. What we're proposing here is. In many aspects, looking at standalone energy storage to balance the grid and give you grid. Um, good operators, uh, an ability to actually keep things in balance with all the solar that you have around you. But if somebody's putting in, how much did you say? Five hundred thousand?
He had his calculator. He said.
So, so what, as in those conditions, those are, those are pretty, that's pretty, that's pretty huge, right? In all fairness for him, I I would never allow that if it was me and I don't, I'm not. I'm, I have no stick in the game really here, but if I did, I would say. That's fine, but you can't install that without a battery energy storage system because you're gonna have unbalanced power feeding during the peak portions of the day. And then when you need it at three o'clock in the afternoon, the sun's gone, there's nothing there, but you wasted all that power during the day. So I wouldn't let the man install it. Or the gentleman or the company installed without having an energy storage system on there, which that takes on a different context. Why do I say that? Because that provides you balanced power. You're taking that power that's being wasted, not used. Or it's being wheeled across the United States somewhere else and you're asking him to provide a more base load, you know. During the day when it's super hot and the sun's up on it, it's has no place to go. So he puts it in the battery and fills it up. So in the afternoon, when the sun goes down. And that solar energy drops off the battery energy, it holds its own, it's seamless. So you kind of see a base load over a period of time. That would be the only way that that would be a feasible way to give base load. Now, at the end of the night, you don't need to load. Let's say nine o'clock or ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night. You know, you don't need the battery anymore. So. The worst case condition is you put the little bitty battery there and it, you tops it off by eleven o'clock in the morning, you know what I mean? Cause you don't have a big enough battery to store the energy that's involved with that. So just keep in mind the idea of like. Balancing things, right? That's what we're trying to do here to provide that opportunity. So you guys can really probably help. The public in general from one end to the other of that corridor. Do that. And I think, I think Wes, you really done a great job, in my opinion. I mean, you know, he showed. You know, from, from a. From a developer perspective, my perspective, when he decided he wanted to put, you know, all the fire stuff off, I was like, oh, you're, this is over, you know? But then there was a convincing that went on to say, you've got to need, you need to know that. You need to understand how that works and you need to understand that we're taking the broadest aspect that you can. Uh, letting it burn. That's the broadest aspect. And then coming back with, like you were asking. Some of the details that are catching up with that, where they're putting suppression in place and different NFP rules associated with that. And and structure built around it for that very reason.
Thank you.
Provides insight with that. The state, the state level is requiring. From what solar fields brought, provide adequate battery storage because. You know, the grid can't handle all that from, so now they change the practice for a solar provider. They would have to provide property, um, proper battery source with their project. Which is actually in there physically in a different location than what you're proposing. I mean, it's straight north of it, but it it's nearby. But it's not where you're exposed to your.
What is your, uh, what's your agreement, you know, talks with National Grid or Eversource?
Well, not yet. Applied for interconnection. And in part, that's because we're trying to lay the groundwork to entitle. The property to begin with. And so it's sort of a cart before the horse situation where we're trying to, you know, balance these things in in parallel. So to answer your question, limited.
Would that work with the easement? Would you travel on their power easement? Why, and why, and my question is, why isn't. These structures being put on these themselves?
That second, let me ask you the first, answer the first question and maybe Nathan can answer the second, but um, we. We do not have the rights to put anything on their easement. Um, I guess that is the second question, but um. And we expect that it's feasible to put them next to the, adjacent to the easement, of of course. Barring that there, you know, we still need a hundred feet separation from any combustible um or structure. But yeah, essentially all the space that we would be utilizing or anyone who would come into this and and build batteries would be using private property that. That is outside of the easement.
So be periphery of the easy.
Correct. But within the comp, ideally within the confines of, yeah, not too far away from the easement.
So just to add that to what you're saying and probably speak into what you're talking about, another gentleman off the grid quite a ways, or not off the grid, but up up. Up the line quite a ways is is what we call tapping into a line. And to your question, when you, when you build adjacent to the substation, then there is what's called, you know, direct connecting. We still put a mini sub in place for all the switch here and everything. Uh, but we're able to direct connect into the transmission system versus going down a line and putting an entire substation in and tapping into the line. Which, um. There may be reasons for that, that sometimes you try to do that and the utility, like National Grid may say that it's too far away. You are in just what we call already congested area. So, um. They might want to do that and they may have actually researched it to see if they could do that. Um. But that's a lot of power on one line. So you try, so the line's running back and forth, power discharge, you know, running power down the line. People are using it, some people aren't. So there's like up and down power going down and all of a sudden down that line. Where everybody's trying to get power off of it, you're just injecting this tremendous amount of power backup. There's issues associated. You have to do what they call studies in there. You're um, basically like a traffic flow study you guys were talking about earlier. You gotta do the same thing in the transmission lines. So you gotta do a feasibility study to 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 see.
So your, your limitation is the transmission line?
Normally, yes. Uh, normally, yes. However, there are people that can, um. You know, like within the confines there, we're looking at the transmission systems associated with that. But some people and in some states are looking at the distribution side of things as well. So the low voltage side of thing. Um, I, I, we haven't spent a lot of time looking at the low voltage side of things. Because our development process is really high voltage transmission systems and our ability to help arbitrate the. Energy um in the afternoons or do regulation up and down or frequency control or stack services.
And both by law, marriage, anything over five megawatts, you're not putting enough of a limitation on. Maximum X megawatts, you're just saying over five megawatts then.
Right.
Whatever you propose.
I mean, in theory, I guess you could do five megawatt in this overlay, but it would also allow for something greater than.
What size do you look together? What size do you see going into under these locations?
Between a hundred seventy and two hundred megawatts powered.
Per station?
Correct.
So what do you?
And you weight that to how much ground area you, you know, based on current.
Believe it's around nine to ten acres.
What's that?
Nine to ten acres of project area and that might include the, the service road that leads into the system. Uh, correct.
So say five acres per farm.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, under two hundred, under two hundred uh megawatts, um, by five acres is. You can even do it in four, but we really wanna, you know. You have, you have to build it, you know, you have to clear and grow. And you, and you gotta build it so that at the end of life, you can, you know, you can remove it if if. If it doesn't go on any further. So. And and Wes has done a great job from a planning perspective, looking at all the pieces on that lifecycle. So with our focus on safety. Uh, more so now than before. So, um. But in in that, you could do um some distribution level install, but I'll go back to the statement that you can. It's easier to tap smaller stuff like that than big stuff. Big stuff should be nice to.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking like, you have something that a typical layperson that doesn't have knowledge, just can wrap their head around it. And generally speaking, it sounds like that you're saying that five acres for a hundred megawatts.
Oh, five acres for two hundred megawatts.
Two, two hundred megawatts, excuse me. So that people can have something to wrap their head around, you know, what's that meaning?
Typical size, is it a five megawatt unit, ten megawatt unit?
What's your? They're five megawatt.
Five megawatts, so you're talking a hundred bucks.
With, and then of course, accompanying that is the um transformers too. So you have a system and you have your transformer. Yeah, it's a little bit more of the transform.
All right, any other questions from the public? Anybody out there?
Um, how many of these units at this size are in Massachusetts right now, you know?
Look at the data through twenty twenty one. I actually didn't see any of that for this side. In my, but I I assume that there must be something that has come online since twenty twenty one.
Is there any something in Connecticut? You know?
And you say Connecticut?
Yes.
No, you haven't, I haven't researched Connecticut. There are two very large projects that Tesla has installed, and I think each one of those are around eight hundred megawatts. They're not finished yet. They're supposed to be finished this year, if I recall that correctly. You can quote me on that.
Is that Maine?
Excuse me.
Maine, you mean?
Um, it's either Maine or Rhode Island. Might be Maine, but I thought it was Rhode Island. I know that Rhode Island is coming to their um, to their cap. Or or needs, right? Uh, stories that they. But I was just gonna say.
Do they function in cold climates?
Yeah, they, they have in cold climates, um, they have, they have, they have a, the battery. Power control system, heats up the batteries, keeps them warm. And then when it's super hot, there's a, an AC system that can can cool it off. So you have both. Controls and that controlled battery life.
I believe Holden has installed a system that there's possible lights, um, not as expansive as this, but I believe it's. Several, several marked containers of of storage.
I'm just talking, it's like your layperson, probably. I'm just talking, it's like your layperson, probably, you hear about the batteries leaking, and then you heard, I heard you mention thermal runoff.
Correct.
And Charlton has a lot of wells, so that might make some people in Charlton a little nervous. I, I understand the need for the electricity and the way, you know, they're really pushing it in my country. But, um, I just had those question because, um. I'm past military, so I'm looking at this and you're saying, well, let's make this whole bridge here filled with all this electricity so that. If someone wanted to come and bomb us, they, you know, they would take us out with the way the terrorists are.
Right.
I just. When you said that Charlton was like a bridge and showed it there, and you have two plants right here, and you guys would be in the middle. Um.
Maybe we should not allow for this to be publicly broadcast, well, that is all public data, but yeah.
She had mentioned the eighteen inch, uh, gas line.
I was just gonna say, you know, we saw this in San Jose where they attacked the substation in San Jose, and then. Now that that substation, if you drive by that substation, you're, you're watched all the time, anything that travels by there is connected, so.
Because anyone in a cold climate, like, um, something like that, bumped all together. It's like saying hi right here.
Right.
But, you know, that's. That's how, that was my question, and then, um. Thermal runoff, I was wondering what that term was, is that if there's a problem with, um, where something really goes bad? That the thermal runoff, the chemical is going to the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to explain that?
Yeah, thermal, it's thermal runaway, which implies that once there's an issue like fire, and there's heat buildup in the system. Um, it sort of create a chain reaction that. Increasing parts of the system become hotter and hotter and hotter, and and they call it thermal runaway because it's sort of. You know, there's, it's limited on what you can do to prevent that heat increase. However, what we've learned over the last few years and what we're. Integrating into this code is the ability to manage that heat, contain it. And a bunch of, I believe, limit or mitigate accidental for thermal runaway, so, um, in the Tesla example. That was a great example of where the fire was contained to one cabinet, one unit, whereas in the past, that might have. There might have been a chain reaction that happened, but the more and more, you know.
Okay, that's all I have to.
But, and then when you mentioned water, though, I think that's important to stress too, because. What we saw in Arizona example, um, was they dumped a bunch of water to try and put out the fire, and unfortunately, at this stage, you can't. You can't suppress fire in that manner with, um.
Because then the water has to go somewhere after you.
Exactly, and then you create a runoff issue, um, the way that we're proposing this is, you know, the fire, and and it's already the case that. I spoke with Captain Carlson, um, Dennis Carlson. He basically said that already with the five megawatts and lower. The let it burn strategy is currently the strategy they employ for, for those, and that that reduces the incidence of a water runoff.
From the also asked a question over here about where else is their location, the city of Carver, which is, um, from you guys east and south. Where's the peninsula there, um, they have a fairly large, uh, system installed there as. As a, as a place where if you wanted to go and figure out how they're all operating.
My partner, I was in Wareham, and Carver has, is a really, um, deserted kind of country town, too. They have the room there, though, between the primary box and everything else I support. That's interesting, I'll have to ask. Anyway, that's all my test, not sorry.
Any other questions from the public?
John? Can you hear me, John? Hi, it's Lori, Lori Deggan, how are you? I just have a few quick points, because my computer's gonna die. Um, I've been following a two hundred and fifty megawatt battery storage plant in Medfield, Mass. Uh, it's on six acres and they have a hundred and forty-two containers. Uh, there's quite a bit of information that the board may want to look at, they have, um, because of it being a. Soft target, they have a minimum eight and eight foot high security fence, not just a chain link fence. Um, they also have on their plan a twenty-two foot high sound attenuation barrier wall. Um, these sites don't seem to be near any neighborhoods, so that may not be an issue. Um, but I would like to see some kind of a cap. On the batteries since, um. Like I said, six acres, you can get two hundred and fifty megawatts. And then I guess this is a question for the, the presenter, I read, you stated that you're looking at a thousand feet max from the substation. I read that it can be up to two miles from the substation. Hmm, is that true?
It, it's dependent on. It's dependent on the, the situation, in this case. Um, there would be no part of the, of the overlay that's in excess of point five miles from the substation.
Okay, I guess I'm asking because of that thousand acre parcel, um, that was mentioned. That could meet the West Charlton substation, so I just wondered, all right, I, before I run out of power. Because it's so large, you are considered a public utility and a generator asset. Um, we've been promised tax dollars in the past only to have. The, the state step in and, you know, keep parcels in sixty-one A, um, and grant, uh. Host agreements instead of taxes, so I think because of this. This is one of the instances where the town may look at a host agreement, because frankly, we're not going to get anything from. Having batteries, we're doing our part for the state, um, like we are with the thirty solar fields and the L N G plant, so. I would like to see, um, some kind of a host agreement if this does pass at town meeting. And then I would like to see a decommissioning bond, uh, Medfield is posting five million dollars, so. This is doable, and this is for the decommissioning of just the batteries, um. But that's just. Some of the, uh, issues I've been reading about, thank you.
Those are fantastic.
Decommissioning bond policy. Also include battery storage, not just limited to. So they're proposing two hundred megawatt battery storage, they're providing. A decommission bond to cover that.
Yeah, I think we need to look at our decommissioning bonds a little bit more to make sure that they.
You might be comparing an apple to an orange, what, what is needed to decommission a battery as opposed to, well, if.
They just shut it off and walked away, what's he gonna cost a town to clean it up?
So I do see the bylaw, uh, covers that, there is, there's a portion of the law that allows for financial security decommissioning.
Right, right.
But there's no numbers there.
Correct.
It's all peer review and and we've had difficulties in the past getting an accurate number with peer review.
Hmm.
So, um, we need to look at that a little bit more, but yeah, I mean, it's in the bylaw, so.
Yeah, and if I may also touch, um. The speaker, Paul, I guess, Lori, Lori, um.
Well.
Spoke about noise, and there is a noise portion in this ordinance that basically says. Um, you're in violation of the ordinance if, if the source of noise increases the broadband sound level by more than five decibels. So essentially, beyond just a sort of the ambient. Uh, level of noise, there's a limitation, so I'm not sure in this case if they're particularly loud. Storage system that requires that sound wall, um, certainly the distance setback and the buffer will do a lot to dampen. The sound as well, but if a wall is necessary to meet this code, that that'll be a requirement. Um, and then you mentioned the security fence, that is, that is also a requirement of this code, is that an eight foot tall security fence is a minimum standard.
Not, not a chain.
Not a chain link, correct.
Uh, and let me address one other question that you have, if you don't mind, on the two mile issue, that's, um, that's doable for anybody on a line, but as I said. Earlier, it, it's dependent upon the study, and generally speaking, you can't congest a line. So you can go two miles down a transmission line, uh, even a distribution line. But the study has to be completed at that location to say whether you can enter, and you can't go further, but within that confines, you can do that. What we're saying is that. The propensity for them to. Clear the interconnection study process and queue cluster for the New England Independent System Operators. It would require a massive study to do that, that's, when especially without any energy storage in it, so. You might be right, that might be what they're doing, is looking at the two mile window in there, do you, do you think, Randy, that they're within the two mile window? Of a substation?
What the, the, the five Boeing centric, oh yeah, I'm looking at the map, so.
Right on the other side of the highway from.
Right on the other side, and he's actually talking about going into Sturridge, and Sturridge doesn't allow solar farms, commercial solar farm.
All that's the other.
So Sturridge is here, Charlton's here, okay, this, he's, he's got property now that Mr. Turner has. People that he has given non-refundable deposits last October, in October twenty twenty-two. To reserve their properties for this, so I'm telling you, this is, this guy is real serious, and the board can attest to this, so it's very close. Very close to this.
I think that will be outside the jurisdiction that we're, uh, I believe that's outside the jurisdiction of Charlton.
Because it's across the highway?
Right.
Because right now, the half mile radius shows it going over the Mass Pike.
Correct, that is the radius, yeah, that we're showing, and then we cut, we kind of cap it off in this drawing, this is what we. Ultimately are proposing, it kind of caps off at that, um, boundary. But yeah, just as the crow flies, you know, a half mile from the.
And is there, and he's probably within, to your point earlier, Lori, is within the two mile radius or the two mile location of the, I shouldn't say two mile radius, that the two mile. Location has to be two miles, the linear two miles from the substation to tap in. And he's not tapping in on something that large in the distribution system, he's tapping into the transmission system, so.
The substation.
Uh, it, no, well, he could, but if he runs to the substation, he has to go through all the right of ways to get to your substation.
Okay.
And I'm saying if he's tapping into the line that's nearest by, then he's tapping, he's not connecting directly, he's tapping.
Okay, so likely to, um, if you look at your map, on the Mass Pike there, Route ninety. Um, the, the likely to, if you're building on the north side of Route ninety, pretty slim. That Route ninety is actually probably gonna be your cutoff point.
Right.
You have room on either side of Route twenty, but to cross over or under Route ninety, you know, is. Not realistic, because that you probably, you're. Outside perimeter, you'd be asking the Route ninety corridor.
Yeah, I think that's realistic.
I don't think we're gonna put anything, go ahead and put that back up there with the, the profit, the, the. Yeah, you would like. On the north end over there, not, not happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would like to stop at Route ninety.
So that's a good point, is that not every single square foot of this overlay will be feasible.
Right.
Um. And then if I may, was one more thing I wanted to address, because Lori brought up the, the tax base. Randy, you alluded that the state is considering making these types of projects tax exempt. And I think our ambition is with section M, the assessment of a revenue share, is that regardless of what the state. Says about property tax, there's still this revenue, revenue share portion, um, which the operator would still be subject to. You know, that's assuming that the state doesn't also come down on particular proffers and things like that, that. May or may not happen.
I mean, what it.
Well, no, I'm just saying, may, may not be, well, you know, the, the solar company's been. You know, fighting with the state for years and become tax exempt because they're energy providers. So it makes sense if they're gonna do it for the solar companies, they do it for the battery storage as well, because they're part of the whole system, so.
And and just, just my two cents for that, and for, that it's worth from a developer standpoint. I can see that for like residential level, maybe, for, for somebody that's putting storage in their home. Um, but anything that's say greater than, I'll just use the number. A hundred kilowatt hours should be. Um, not exempt. You guys should be able to tax that, all your tax base in.
I mean, there's large incentives by the state to develop that.
Right.
For you people.
Right. And so re- assessment of revenue share. I think is gonna be important, and maybe we need to tweak the numbers on that, but that needs to be a piece where. Yeah, there's some spillover, because like we said, well, as Lori had mentioned. We understand that there's a regional benefit to battery storage, but what is the benefit directly to Charlton? Yes, they share in those benefits of energy reliability and so forth. But, and they're also foregoing character and something, and you know, and in other aspects, there's, there's a cost, so to speak.
I appreciate your candidness, at least. It's not hostile.
Usually it's the board that's.
Well, no, I mean, to, to Lori's point, we have a, we've got, I don't know what our. What our agreement was with the, uh, the gas. Situation, you know, and that was imposed, the state imposed that on the.
Yeah.
Yes, the state citing committee came in and they said it's gonna go here and. You, if the town wants to fight it. Well, they said, go ahead and hire all lawyers and environmental consultants you want, and I was on the L N G committee for the town, down in Charlton. And we started looking and costing it out, and it was gonna cost between three hundred and fifty thousand and a half million, and you know what? We had, we talked to, to some of the experts out there, and they said, you might as well just. Burn your money, just throw it away, because the citing, the, the state citing board. Their entire, their entire, um, uh, reason for existence, because they report only to the governor of Massachusetts. Is to cite these facilities, and guess what? Now they're saying we, we want renewable energy, what is it, thirty, thirty percent or something like that, thirty-five percent by twenty thirty, or whatever that turns.
This is that.
Part of it. Find a place for this.
Well, that's what the other person, what Evan is proposing to, is that we do not approve his plan.
Right, he's gonna go to the state, and then the state's gonna ram it right down our first solar projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I guess, for the, you know, it's getting late, everything, a lack of time.
We'd like to.
What I would say for, I mean, it's. I guess what I would say to all of that is that, uh, we wanna, we wanna continue to work with you, and I think what Wes is trying to do, he's trying to preempt all this stuff. Are you guys taking a bit of the lead in, in, in the state, saying this is, this is what we're gonna do ahead of all your stuff, this is how we cooperate. And you don't get us come in and, and white plow everything into whatever you, somebody wants in, but. And, and it's hard, it's a hard point to argue against, once you, like you said, it's very defensible. This is a very defensible positioning in the state, you can't come in and say, oh, you know, you didn't, you're not doing what we want you to do, you need to do this, no, we've agreed as a. As a community, this is what we want to do. And, and we're gonna make application, if somebody else wants to make application, you know, to do the same, very well, but that's the corridor. This is the plan, those are the substations, this is where we're meeting, um, east to west, and, I, I mean.
In theory, there are other substations elsewhere in the state that, you know, this one might have a plan for. And that's, you know, go to the other substation.
It looks, to me, I, I don't know, I, at first I had a hard time. Getting my mind wrapped around what Wes wanted to do here, because it usually takes quite a bit to do that. Seems like you guys have already been pushing more than one corner on the, in different matters.
We're on, yeah, we've been, we've been educated on that. We know where you're coming from, we get, we get the need, um, we understand.
I'd like to.
Thank you for being honest.
Thank you, thank you, then, I'd like to wrap this up, and, um, you wanna make a motion to continue the public meeting or?
Well, do we, it isn't, it's not really a public hearing, so do we need to continue it, or is it just something we? Okay, um, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to January seventeenth.
Well.
Um, it's, well, we can discuss it as a board, I don't know if you need to be here.
You need to be here.
I mean, you, if you can't be in person, you can't be as, yeah. If you want to do.
But because we are a limited board here tonight, it'd be good to, you know.
I think my only request would be to, uh, perhaps give us questions that you would like us to respond to.
So do you want to push it off until the seventh of February, is that our February meeting?
Yes.
I mean, we can, that way we can.
Go now. I'm the business developer, no, let's go now.
Yeah, I'm happy to come back, yeah, yeah, happy to come back, but, you know, we want to be responsive to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know, and maybe the board, uh, we're just considering, maybe the board get together, come up with some questions, and then recognize bracket, but. But if it's the seventeenth, is that?
Yeah.
Seventeenth or seven, I'll leave it to you.
It's the seventeenth.
Okay.
Yeah, the one thing is, uh.
We have time, do we have, do we have availability on the seventeenth?
Um, he, they've reached out to the fire department, and Dennis Scott, I even reached out to him, he hasn't responded yet, but I think from our. He, they've reached out to the fire department, and Dennis Scott, I even reached out to him, he hasn't responded yet, but I think from our. Town's point, can say a point that we should hear from him to make sure that, you know, this. Satisfied, that it could be handled or with the proper training, you know, whatever they come up with. So that, that's addressed, so the planning board, they're gonna make a recommendation, or they can make an informed decision, so.
And, and would this also be a special permit application to give the board a little bit more leverage and, okay?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so I make a motion that we continue this public hearing on the seventeenth.
Second that.
Yeah, all in favor.
Don, play aye. Bill Fontaine, aye.
Alright, that does it, we'll see you, or talk to you on Zoom on the seventeenth, and thank you for your. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There's some candy there. It's a long ride back wherever you're staying, I don't know whether that is, but thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you, you're very helpful.
Alright, we're behind the times a little, um, seven fifteen, it's a public hearing for reduced frontage lot, the common driveway. Special permit of Gale Road. When you read this out, notice of a public hearing, reported to the section. Two hundred dash five dash one three and two pa- two hundred dash point two point G. Of the Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton planning board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, January third of two thousand twenty-four, seven fifteen P M. At the planning board office, in the George McKinnon Street Building, thirty-seven Main Street, via Zoom. Do meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven, in the application of Mary Stone, six Gale Road, Charlton, Mass. Oh, one five oh seven, for the approval of the common driveway, for the common driveway, and two. Reduced frontage lots contain approximately eleven acres for the purpose of building two new single-family homes. Property is located on assesses map seventy-five, block C, lot five, and five point two. And is in the agricultural A district, copies of the reduced frontage lot special permit applications are available. At the planning board office and complex office during regular business hours, any person of mercy who should be heard. Should appear at the time of the, in the place designated for this meeting. Members of the public who listen, watch the meeting remotely may do so on the following matter, matter, in that seasonal meeting. That's from Ross, um. Do we have anyone here for this public?
So, do I sit or stand?
You, you can sit up and introduce yourself to.
I live at six Gale Road in Charlton, my husband's family's been there for seventy-eight years, they originally purchased. The property from the original Dale Farm homestead, and, um. We're trying to make room for the fifth generation for, for two of our daughters, um. We couldn't, we couldn't come before the board because we needed to go to the zoning board first to get approval for a common driveway variance. So the common driveway variance was approved by Z B A, and it was recorded in the Worcester County, um. Registry of Deeds on the twenty-seventh of December, and so now it's the opportunity to come before the planning board. And my engineer is still on, um, he doesn't come back into the office until tomorrow. But I wanted to thank you guys for waiting so long for us to come before you, and, um. I'm here basically.
Waiting so long, night to go.
Yes.
I just try to keep it short, because, um, I know you guys need to get home.
Oh, no, yeah.
But I just wanted to be here tonight, um, to explain the project, and any questions you might have, um. My engineer called it conceptual approval. But that's just, um.
Yeah. Need to be able to put in two separate driveways to meet the bylaws, she would have to go straight through wetland. And through, through the recommendation of mass, uh, D E Ps. And, uh, conservation commission is that they, she utilizes one driveway, the existing driveway. To avoid further impacting the wetlands, so it ends up being, um, one driveway taxes four lots.
We currently, yeah. Our original plans went all, just what the town said, we had a, the original plan that we had submitted to conservation. Had another driveway coming in through the wetland, and then I got a knock on my door, and it's the, um, D E P. And they wanted to take a trip around our lot, I had to sign a paper, and I walked with them, and, um, Angela from conservation was there. And after reviewing the property, they said that we, our project was red flagged, because. To put another driveway fifty-five feet, another wetland crossing, fifty-five feet from another, um. Existing crossing, that they had it from down in. See why, and then after they looked at the property, they, um. They said that, uh, they recommended that the proposed lots be given access over the current existing, um, wetland crossing. So then we had to go before the zoning board, the hills, and we had to replan to this current plan, which is revision three. And after talking with the fire department, um, we added, uh, down near the houses, for each of the girls, there's, um, an. A turnaround down there for fire, that's something they recommended, it's not required, but I think it's a good, um, thing for safety.
Hmm.
And what else, and. Look, Kurt Meska said at the zoning board of appeals that. This is, I think he said, one or two percent of people that would qualify based on. Um, really being limited on way you can build, because of that wetland that's out front, and, um. With the last current rainstorm, you know, it makes you think about, this is where your wetland really gets tested, and I haven't seen the water level this high like. Since, I've been in Charlton for like thirty years, so, and our, and everything has been contained right where it is. But in walking through, um, with the Department of Energy, um, of Environmental Protection. They mentioned, mentioned a few things that they wanted cleared up, and the impact here to the wetland is really enlarging the common driveway. From twelve feet, which is what it is now, because it was put in thirty years ago, and. We just recently had that one culvert there improved, and it was done, um, right up to code. And all they have to do is expand it, it to the eighteen feet, whatever the requirement is, they're still. I'm sure they're, they're gonna tweak this plan a little bit more, what, because conservation needs to be updated, they need a revised. Revised project description, which, we were waiting for me to come to the planning board, and then our engineer to tweak our plan. Before we can give the plan to conservation, but nothing changes right here on the plan. Everything we've done for conservation there on the plan is what was requested, I think it's just a matter of, now that we've got the approval. And our plan has changed since the original one, that was submitted to conservation, just like the original one I submitted to Randy, um. Was the old plan, now this is the new plan, and so, of course, conservation's gonna need an update. But, um, we can't survey the land till we get approval from the planning board, to say that, um. You know, they're okay with it, or get approval, and you probably can't really approve it until my engineer comes in, and you can, if you have some engineering questions. Um.
Is there a culvert there now that you need to put an extension on and know where to make it?
It was, it was pretty environmental, I think you guys.
Common portion of driveway is three, eighteen feet wide, so.
And right now it's twelve, so it have.
Yeah.
According to the engineer, they just have an extension that they can put on to the culvert.
They're always, it's so easy.
The, uh, actually, the, the Department of, um, Environmental Protection lady said that this. This culvert was, she was very pleased with the culvert, and she said this would last, I've seen these last over fifty years.
So there's no issue about disturbing.
No.
Relocate wetlands, or do you have to, you basically slap an extension on and kill them all?
Right, and the area that we're taking on that side is within the buffer zone, within wetland, so what we're doing is, you can see on there, on the diagram, down by the, um.
I can see your.
That's where we're gonna do the wetland renovation.
Okay. Alright.
And, um.
Okay.
They're gonna allow us, they wanted us to daylight, um, right before the culvert, because they said over the year sediment can kind of crash in. And stop the water from flowing, and they believe that that's what's happened here, because you're having a big backup. It didn't used to be that way, a big backup of water, and so what they recommended is right outside the culvert, there's like the, the pond level, it's a pond now. Is up there, and then they just wanted us to, um, when they do the excavating for the cul- for the, um, culvert. To daylight, which means just naturally remove rocks to the side, so that the water can flow naturally. Under the culvert, and then over to.
So you, you're breaking out lot one and two, is, is the plan from the property, or those?
My father-in-law owns the property next to us.
Okay.
And in order for us to meet the five acre requirement, we needed a little more land. And we also needed to meet the six hundred foot, um, women to the. Um, requirement for the, uh, lots.
Yep.
Reduced slots needed that, so we needed a little more over to the side, so as soon as everything is, um. Like approved, then we can get it surveyed, and then I can, we can go through the purchase and sales day with my father-in-law for the property.
Randy has Kurt looked at this?
Yeah.
He has, he has looked at it.
He had to present to the zoning board.
Okay, okay.
And he had a whole diagram that he put up, and, um.
So once, once it's approved, you come, it'll come back for an E and R to subdivide the lots.
Yeah, once the, the engineer.
Yeah, was able to.
I just wanted to introduce the project, I know that you can't give approval or anything tonight, but.
Three of the lots, because. Because reducing that one, then the two new lots, they're over the back, but it's all done as part of one application.
By reducing my father-in-law's, it's not, he still has his road frontage, he still has every other requirement for a legal lot. And, um, the way we have, um, the fire apparatus turnaround down by the beginning of the private driveways is, um. Will be beneficial, cause everything there has to be tarred. I'm not sure the requirement of tying the, the turnaround, but that will keep, all that has to stay always cleared.
Mm-hmm.
For safety and fire purposes, so that, what that does is just make the line of sight at each of these driveway ends. Um. Visible, and we're gonna be putting those red stakes in at each driveway, with one out on there. You know, if the town wants it, out on the town saying that, I've seen some people do it with their red stakes, they say, um. Like six through twelve.
Yeah, you're gonna have four riders to one.
Phil, any comments, Phil?
Yep, no, nothing, uh, no comments, thank you.
Batsy. Well, thank you for coming.
Alright, well, thank you for, is there any questions or anything that you would want me to do before?
We need to, to do this.
Yeah, continue the public hearing.
Um, January seventeen.
This is January seventeenth, that. Okay.
With the engineer.
With the engineer, okay.
There's still one, I know.
Before this, this last guy. No, that's okay, I'm fine, because I got to, um, explain the project to you guys, without having a bunch of people looking at me.
Okay, make a motion to, uh, continue the public hearing for the stone reduced frontage lot to January seventeenth.
Second that.
All in favor. Uh, Don, play aye.
Bill Fontaine, aye.
Don Smith, aye. Well.
It's a special permit, right?
Yeah.
Batsy.
Yes.
Batsy, red black eye.
Thank you, Batsy. Alright, now, it is continued to the seventeenth. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, next is a, uh. Seven thirty, a re- a request for approval of a decommissioning bond for the Sturridge Road Solar Farm LLC.
Yeah, they wanna talk to the board with the, uh, advocate, um. Um, it's surgery, they're gonna make it so they request to be, uh, continued on September.
Okay, it's gonna be a busy night. With Ross's back. Alright, we have an approval with seven forty, approval not required for the Stevens Family Trust on Freeman Road.
Yeah, I wrote to board members from the last meeting, that, uh, the dispute with the family of. Who can do what, and we have, um, they're turning to write a letter saying that. Um, the father. Who signed this application is the owner of the property. Yeah, Frederick Stevens, he, he is, you know, they, they have the deed information, everything, and the letter from the attorney saying. It's his property, and he signed the application, and I, it sounds like there may be some. Family dispute, but as far as even our approval, we have, you know. The advocate has signed the application, the attorney has verified that it is his land. So, so there's no reason why the board cannot approve the A and R. They might just, you know, the, the family matter is something I take upon themselves.
Isn't it cutting through, like a driveway and a house, or?
Well, there is an existing house on the property already, and then, uh, I think the balance of the property is, is the existing junkyard property.
No, I need to jump there for that.
Did you hear me?
Do we, um. Don't say nothing. I'll do it tomorrow.
I guess is, uh.
Okay.
Steve's son.
Yeah, it, do you wanna take a, yeah.
Go ahead.
Still here.
Yeah, can we?
I'm still here.
Have a little clarification on this, Monica?
Okay, they, basically the. I don't know why they're saying that Mr. Frederick Stevens is the owner of the property, he's only the trustee. Joseph, Ted, which is Fred H, and Karen L, like.
Fred I.
Or Fred I, I'm sorry, are the beneficiaries of that trust.
That, we're on the deeds.
We are on the deed to that property.
He's only the trustee.
He's only the trustee. This is all in, in, in an irrevocable trust.
Who, did, did we have our lawyer look at this, or, I mean, the, I. Should that even be needed, cause we have. We have a letter from.
Joe.
So Mr. Frederick is the single trustee.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
Oh, he's the trustee, yes, I'm sorry. He's not a beneficiary of the property.
He does not own the property.
Does not own it.
But he is the.
The trust. If you understand the trust, and you've taken this to a separate attorney, away from the trust attorneys and drawn over the town.
Our names are on the deed, his isn't.
His children's names are the beneficiaries. Of the trust of the lien.
We are.
He does not own it.
Our names are on the deeds, that's all it's. Our names are on the deeds, that's all it's.
Joseph K Stevens, Fred I Stevens and Karen L White. Were listed as. The land was turned over to them in nineteen sixty-two. According to the trust. Their names are on the deed for the property in question.
So what does, I mean, not being a lawyer, lawyer, I don't know what a beneficiary has. Well, they do supposed to do what's best for us.
The trustee.
And we mean nothing about this.
The trustee is legally obligated to do what benefits the beneficiaries. Not himself.
So who is on the phone now? We've got um, Monica.
This is Monica Stevens, I am Joseph White.
Okay, and Joseph is also speaking.
He's, he's present right here in the room, yes.
Okay.
If you look at page two, it's your January twenty-six nineteen sixty-two, recording the Worcester that. Fred Stevens.
You have all the deeds up there, you can see our names on them.
Fred Stevens, Joseph Stevens are all as beneficiaries of the custody agreement.
Let's use that, ask business wise, who owns it? I have no idea what the.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, could we um. Not to be. I, I would think there would be a lawyer that needs to, can we ask?
But we, we've got a message from a lawyer saying that because he is the trustee. This is the, the trustee for fresh experience.
But it's not our lawyer.
No. No, but he's a lawyer, I mean, if he says. His authority make decisions of the Stevens Family Trust. For the deeds from Americans and it seems like something that's gonna have to be litigated. Um, the opinion from.
Can you tell us what you guys are trying to do?
We have heard nothing about this.
What, what are they involving the planning board for?
To subdivide tract the land with a house on it from the balance of the land.
They wanna cut our land up, it's like it was before.
So they wanna divide it up?
My house lot.
They wanna take one house lot of it, uh. And uh, subdivide from the rest of the property.
And that would be Joseph's house lots.
As trustee of the trust. He's has sole authority to make decisions on the trusts. And if it's something that's not advantageous to the beneficiaries. Then I think that becomes a legal issue, not a, not a board issue. So as, so it's, it's something that. You're gonna need to take up as a legal issue, but I think as, and, and we should get clarification just from our legal counsel. That as a trustee. Uh, of this trust, Frederick Stevens has the authority to make these decisions on behalf of the trust. Um, just because you're listed as a, a beneficiary in the deed and an owner of the deed. I still think this document gives him um, sole authority to make those decisions. But we'll get that clarified.
Yeah, I think that's the best recourse based on the current situation.
So we have, we have a le- letter from uh. Mr. Frederick Stevens' attorney, we have the deed, we can see on the deed the names. That you say, we've got a letter from, from you, Joseph. Um, we'll present this to our. Um, the town attorney and, and see what his opinion is.
Okay, but I, I was never informed of any of this. I was never informed of any of it.
Well, you, you, we, you don't have to be informed, is uh, approval not required?
Well, that's my house lot.
It's not, it's not required to have a public hearing where people get notified.
Yeah.
The, the, the house lot is, is owned by the trust. And Frederick.
Which is us.
Just, well, the, the, it's only you are, well, you are in part of the trust, you are beneficiary of the trust. But the trustee, but the trustee is Frederick and he has authority to, to uh. Make decisions on behalf of the trust, so I, I, I don't know. You know, like I said, it's, it's, it's gonna be a legal issue, uh, unfortunately.
Right, well, you, you do what you gotta do, have your lawyer look at it.
Yeah, I have a feeling, I have a feeling that I'm. Is, is gonna agree with this, this other legal uh, documents, so. We'll, we'll.
I still own all the land.
Fortunately for you, I think it's gonna become a legal issue.
Here's that uh. Frederick Stevens does have it, but we're gonna confirm that with our attorney to make sure that. Our attorney agrees with uh, Mr. Stevens' attorney that. He does have legal authority to make decisions on behalf of the trust. And if you disagree with, then you would have to be a civil matter.
I'll take care of it. Okay.
So.
They will wait off on this until we hear back from our attorney.
Yep.
To make sure that.
And it shouldn't, it shouldn't be too much when you just look at this document, no more legal precedents.
Okay, so would you like to uh, move this to?
Um, you only wanna say uh. We've faded seventeenth, I don't know how quickly he'll react, cause if we don't have it on seventeen, we can always push it to February seventh if we had to.
You want me to make a motion?
So it depends, if, if our attorney gets back to us and, you know, in time, then we might have an answer.
Since this isn't a public hearing, do we need to vote on moving it or is this?
No, it's just an A and R, so.
Okay, so we're not taking no action on it tonight?
Right, so we'll just plan to. We'll, we'll put it on our seventeenth agenda, you know, if the, our attorney gets back to it, I can just make it over. I mean, I agree.
I, I have a feeling that, that.
The ability to make determinations on behalf of the trust, but that'll be up to the attorneys to determine.
Alright, we uh, just Monica, and so you guys know that we'll, we'll take this up again on. The seventeenth of January, hopefully we'll have some feedback from our attorney. And uh.
Okay.
And, and see where it goes from there.
Okay, but what you're saying is, is contradictory to what the attorney who we took the trust to. Where he does not own anything. He's only the trustee.
Yeah, we, we, we just need to.
Yep, clarify right ahead.
Yeah, it's just. Yeah, the informed decision and the, the landowner by right has the availability to subdivide land, so what's. Without requiring any deliberation from us. Uh, as long as he sub- submits a plan to us and needs a legal order, so that's the question. And we don't, and we, we do not want to run afoul of the law or run afoul of. Of uh, of decisions made. With your family too, so I just, we'd like a clarification, we'll try to take it up next on the seventeenth and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Uh, seven fifty, other business unknown, a kind of posting.
No, there, uh, there's no other business at the moment, um. Just have enough data on few ongoing or. De- future projects that are.
Planning, then we'll go right to the planning board update.
I mean, the biggest thing we're seeing right now is actually, uh, we have. One multi-family uh, development submitted, we're gonna have another multi-families development submitted. The first one's Charlie Crossing Road, we already have that, the other one that developed, we're bringing in. For North Main Street, we've been working with him for about a year on that one.
Are these townhouses or these? These are townhouses?
They're all townhouses.
Okay.
And then uh, also, there's another one on uh, Charlie Crossing, which he also said is coming in soon. I know, but we have the one, the one side of Charlie Crossing, the one on this uh. But Main Street, he's done electronics mission, but he has to do paper and the feeds and all that, so.
So townhouse is not, not duplexes, townhomes, not multi-family building, not apartments, just?
No, it's the, um, they're, the one on Charlie Crossings is like two, like I consider townhouse, you know. You know, four units and building garage and all that, the uh, one on um. North Main Street, it actually varies on how many units per houses, cause they're building. In or around wetlands and everything, they're kind of squeezed as many as they can into that area, so. It's, the number of units vary, but they're also the same idea. Garage, you know, two-car garage and then the home will be, you know, on. The garage is on the lower level than the home.
So this is village district building, love.
Yes, all villagers, district building, which the board's gonna have a lot of control over that, aesthetics. But the number of other things. And we're gonna get a lot of new sidewalks out of it too.
Very nice, that's.
Okay. Okay. Interesting, and then uh, well, actually, and I, I've been, people have been. Calling me, but I guess a transfer sale out on Route twenty. Which is right next to the city, we were talking about the overlay, um. There's a cell tower out there, next to Dorvus, a trailer leasing, the trailer leasing company. Bought the land from the landowner, I don't know if that's there, there's a lot of land there for just trailer leasing, so I don't know if they have. Bigger aspirations or not, so. Um, cause they, both their attorney and engineers are asking like, what's the project to go through the planning board and say. Well, you gotta tell me what you want to do, and say, well, I don't wanna tell you, then it's, it's very hard to me to tell you.
Well, that's interesting, yeah, okay. So, so there is a lot of land there, but there's not a lot of space between twenty and.
Yeah, well, it's, it's forty-five acres, but it's a big chunk of wetlands and then that cell tower is right in the wrong spot.
Of course.
You got anything, you guys? Anything going on with the E D C for him?
No, nothing lately, uh, the, the biggest news is that Charlton Business uh, Committee. That was formed by Matthew on the E D C, so it's kind of just a. A grassroots effort to pull together a lot of the entrepreneurs in town and get organized and he's had uh. A previous meeting, I think at the, at the library, I think he's got another one scheduled coming up very soon, but uh. It's good activity and a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of entrepreneurs. What they need is more awareness in town, so we are talking about using the signboard. You know, right on the corner of twenty, right by the, the commons area. And just announcing whatever the business of the week or the business of the month in, in town, something like that. If not on a table inside of town hall itself and just other ways to promote businesses, you know, they don't. They're not asking for grants, they're just asking for awareness of, of their, of their businesses, um, so. Any other ideas, please uh, make a suggestion.
Maybe build with a sandwich board in front of uh, Charlton Pizza. Hit your bell too. Oh, uh, who's the bell ringer? The con, um, what's his name? Our town crier.
The trick, the town crier, yep.
Um, Cedric, Cedric. Alright, you guys, um, I guess that will be it, everybody all set with? Or Don, anything?
Uh, I'm good.
Alright, Randy, thank you, Patsy, Phil.
Thank you, good night.
Hey.
Good night.
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second that, second.
All in favor?
Don play aye.
Phil Fontaine, aye.
John Smith, aye. Thank you. We'll see you at the seventeenth.